2018 Common Council Meeting and the first order of business would be roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mijesci.
Here.
Caravello.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Weesinger.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Duransek.
Here.
And Hirsch's absent and excused, there are 11 alders present.
Thank you. And next order of business would be communications. Are there any communications from any council members? Seeing none, we'll move into presentations. And the first presentation is on Stormwater Quality Management Plan. And Rodney will introduce our guest.
Tonight, we have John Lindertz from Strand. He's on the team that helped us put together the stormwater plan that he's going to discuss tonight. And if you've got questions briefly afterwards, we'll try to entertain them. But we'll have more direct discussion about the plan at the Public Works meeting in an upcoming month.
Thank you, Rodney. So I'm going to give you a summary, probably 20, about 20-some slides here on the Stormwater Quality Management Plan that we've been working with Rodney and your staff on for the last year or so. The things we're going to talk about is an introduction, your current and updated stormwater program that you're required to do under a permit, the Rock River Total Maximum Daily Load, which is kind of the big requirement that you're having to deal with, the stormwater quality modeling that supports how you're going to meet that, alternatives analysis in terms of how you're going to meet it by BMPs or Stormwater Best Management Practices in the city, water quality trading and watershed adaptive management, which is some, which is an opportunity you guys have here in Dane County area, Madison area. We'll look at stormwater utility rates and how those might be affected, and some recommendations.
BMPs?
Best Management Practice, so like a wet detention pond or a biotention basin that you might see around the landscape.
John, can you move your mic a little bit?
A little closer, sure. Okay, so to start out on the first bullet, you guys have a what's called NPDS or WPDS permit, stormwater permit. There's a lot of acronyms there. The point is, it's a stormwater permit. You're required by the EPA and the DNR to comply. The second bullet is the actual permit number and when they expire, and they renew those every five years. You have done some previous stormwater plans, including in '06 and 2010. It's kind of relatively frequent updates that are necessary due to the requirements that are, that keep coming out. From an MS4 standpoint, or is your stormwater permit, and what the DNR would say, there's requirements, and then this Rock River Basin TMDL requirement. And if we look at this table here, we have different reaches that the TMDL has. It's a DNR EPA document. Those requirements are over here. Your requirement from your stormwater permit from the DNR is here, which is a 20% TSS, or total suspended solids reduction that you need to get citywide. The TMDL takes that up a notch. You know, you can see per reach what it, how it compares to the 20%. So it's quite a bit more onerous than what you're used to, or what the DNR is currently requiring. And that's why we're here. The Yhara River and Rock River are 303D listed. That means they're impaired. There's something that's not letting them meet their fully intended use from the DNR. And that's, again, why you would have a total maximum daily load to try to fix that. And then we have an updated plan that we'll talk about. There's a variety of compliance options that you can go down that path. And then stormwater utility rates, kind of said that already. So this is the permit, the top of the permit, front page. And these are the permit conditions. With, you know, they span from public education to illicit discharge type issues, keeping things out of the water that shouldn't be there, your stormwater ordinance and your rosh control ordinance, what you're doing with your municipal operations, whether it be street sweeping or at your public works yard, stormwater quality management requirements. You have to update, keep a map. There's an annual report you need to do. And there's quarterly meetings that Rodney attends. I attend as well on behalf of a number of clients that do things collectively as a group to try to save money on the, on the public education side of things. You did get a grant for this project. Total project was $99,800. And you can see there the state and local share. So the DNR has kind of stepped to the plate to help you out on this, as they are other, some other communities as well. So all those conditions we had in a couple of slides ago, there's some more information here on that. Like I said, the public education is through this MamSwap quarterly meetings. Most of it is anyway. Illicit discharge detection, you have to, and have been doing so, looking at the end of your pipes as they come into rivers and things, at 29 locations. And you're supposed to be looking at those annually. And then there's two outfalls that you can look at every five years for their guidance. The next two are basically your ordinances. We did some revisions to those. Rodney brought those through to get implemented or adopted. There are some issues with the private, all the private BMPs that are out there and making sure they're maintained. So there's a program that we're recommending that's in the report to kind of keep on top of that. From a pollution prevention standpoint, municipal operations, we also have in there some monies and earmarking some monies to start dealing with dredging of wet detention ponds that are out there and that are filling up over time. So that's something that's in there. You're also tracking quantities of some of the things that your public works department are doing, such as street sweeping, de-icer, catch basin cleaning, leaf collection. DNR wants to know what you're doing with that and have, has that requirement to track that. And then a stormwater pollution prevention plan at your public works, Parks Department building, we've, that's part of the plan as well. Windslam modeling, which is stormwater quality modeling and alternatives analysis, we'll get into more. And that's kind of the big, the big one that's going to cost, cost some money. Stormwater system map and annual report or biannual report coming up as well. And Rodney's been taking care of that. So if we go back to the Rock River TMDL and what that means, this is the cover of that document you can see here. And it spans the entire Rock River watershed, of which the Yhara is in. You guys are down in here. And this is spurring a lot of the requirements. If we look at these reaches that I had talked about before, we have Reach 66 up here, so kind of this line, so just a little bit of cities in that. Reach 67, most of the city is in. And there's some, some of the decent amount of city in 68 and just a small amount in 69, just to give you a location on that. On a stormwater quality modeling standpoint, what we do is we use a stormwater model and it produces results. Basically, what type of pollutants are building up on your landscape? And then, as it rains, they're washing off. And so it's a whole kind of a simulation of rainfall events. And so that's how we arrive at trying to meet the TMDL. This graphic here shows baseline condition of no, or no controls. Basically, the DNR wants to say, hey, what would it look like if you didn't have any controls or wet ponds and things? And so the darker, like the purple areas are like your industrial areas, and those have a higher load per acre. And then this is another way to look at it. When you put the existing controls in there, such as street sweeping and wet ponds, those colors get less dark, like up in this industrial park, went from a purple to a green, at least in one of the watersheds. And so this is a way for us to hotspot, to look at hotspots and where you might do additional stormwater controls to the TMDL. So this table here is a look at basically those requirements we talked about before, the MS4 requirements of 20% TSS, and then the Rock River TMDL requirements, which is these percent reductions for TSS and these for total phosphorus. You notice that the MS4 permit did not have a total phosphorus requirement, and so that's new and something you're having to deal with now. The other way we look at this is, what are, what are these existing conditions and how do they compare to the Rock River TMDL? And if you, if you simply subtract these two, you can get what's called a TMDL pollutant reduction gap. And so basically, what's saying is you need 11.8 more percent reduction in Reach 66, 7 and 67, 26.6 and 68. And then you actually, okay, in 69, because it's a negative number, that means you've met that. And so you can go down to the total phosphorus and kind of do a similar calculation. And, you know, it then highlights what you're, what you're going to have to do to, that you have a gap and you have to do something about it, pollutant reduction gap. This is just another way to look at this. And it's looking at a table that looks at this reduction gap in pounds of TSS and pounds of TP, which helps us understand kind of magnitude of, of the BMPs you might need out there, stormwater controls you may need out there. So after you do some of this modeling, this is just kind of a flow chart of how this all works, is obviously you need understanding the DNR rules. We did the grant writing. We're doing the stormwater quality modeling under the stormwater plan. And there's three ways to comply: water quality trading, watershed adaptive management, and design and construction of BMPs within your municipality. And I should point you to the top right here is, is, well, actually, we should go here. Watershed Adaptive Management is a great tool, and it actually is already set up in Dane County for the Yhara communities. And it's called Yhara Winds. Maybe you guys have talked through that, I would imagine. And you guys are a member of that. And so what that allows you to do is get part of your compliance through agricultural BMPs, through Milwaukee Met and Dane County and then Farmers, at really a low cost compared to how you can do it in your own community. So, but there's a nuance there, which is that you first have to get to 40% TSS and a 27% total phosphorus reduction in your own community, kind of do your part before you can buy into Yhara Winds. So what our alternatives analysis is geared towards is finding ways to get to these numbers so that you can buy in at a low cost to watershed adaptive management, if I'm stating that correct, Rodney, yep. And if you go in order of what's cheapest and what's most expensive, this is the least expensive, and then this, and then it's most expensive to actually build these BMPs. And that's just the way it is. So, not just here. So this is example of one of the alternatives that we came up with to help get to that 40 and 27%. And so it's alternative five, and Bionian Park, wet pond. So this is the park down here. This would be a pond, a wet detention pond up in this area up here. And you would divert water into it, and it would come back out and be treated. Another one would be Commerce Road, so over by Zok Joseph's, small biotention basin here. And then, what do we have here? Industrial Circle Wet Pond, so by Stoughton Storage, South Storage?
Stoughton Trailers.
Okay. No, this, this is up, oh, up in the Business Park.
Okay.
And so wet pond there. This is Dunkirk Park and Dunkirk Ave. And so we had an underground wet detention pond there because of kind of a lack of space, trying to do something that would not impact the park, overly impact the park. And let's see, Stoughton Trailers is here, actually, converting that from a dry pond to a wet pond. And then Industrial Park South Bio Basin to wet pond is, is another project. And I should say, these are in Reach, Reach 67 up here and Reach 68. So those are, that's just a flavor of what one of these alternatives might look like. This happens to be one of the more cost-effective ones to construct these six, and then also doing, relying on some redevelopment that happens in your community each year. So. This is alternative number two, another one that was kind of more cost-effective than, than some others. And so this retains these two BMPs in Reach 68. And then it goes to a weekly street sweeping in the downtown area, which, if you can see, there's kind of green highlights throughout the downtown area that where currently you sweep, I think, twice a week. And where, at least in this alternative, it would go to once a week. And then in the rest of the city, going from monthly sweeping to every two weeks sweeping. So you can, you can get quite a bit of performance by increasing the street sweeping that you're already doing. Okay. So, so that was BMPs within the community. This is water quality trading. And there's some opportunities out there to trade with some of the MS4s around, like the Town of Dunn, Town of Pleasant Springs. And they, this is, this is a column of the facility, or what we're calling a facility. And this is the available amount of pounds of TSS and total phosphorus that you could trade with at a cost. The treatment plant as well has some availability. And, and so we kind of looked into that. And that's like this $110 per pound range. The, and we'll talk next about watershed adaptive management and what that cost is. But let's just keep going, I guess. So this is the big opportunity you guys have. It's Yhara Winds Watershed Adaptive Management. And here's some details on that. MMSD is administrator, Dane County brokers with Farmers, water quality monitoring is done by USGS. And the point is to get non-point sources working together to protect the water resources. And as I said before, you have to achieve a 40% TSS and 27% TP before you can buy into this. You are a member, and the cost is 48 bucks per pound compared to $110 or so on water quality trading. We'll talk a little bit in a bit about what it costs to build them in your own community. The other thing that's of note is, once you get to this 40 and 27%, there's a buy-in amount. Right now, you're paying $11,000 in per year. And basically, they're allowing you to pay in right now. And so after our modeling update, that number actually is going to be reduced to 8,076 for a difference of 29 and 24. And since you paid the $11,000 in the last two years, they're going to reimburse that, 29 and 24 times two for those two years. And you'll get 50, $5,000 and some dollars back over a, I think, four-year period, is, just to kind of correct that.
$55,000 or $5,500?
$5,500, sorry, or so.
I'd rather have the $55,000.
I know. Okay, so here's the alternatives analysis. Unfortunately, you are not to that 40% and 27%. So we have to look at ways to do that. And so these are the five ways, five alternatives. So we package up BMPs, water quality trading, redevelopment, and look at, we looked at five of these. And the total 20-year net present worth, which looks at the time value of money, and financing some of your BMPs and how that comes back to today's dollars. And then the dollars per pound of TP removed, as you can see, is over $1,000, up to $2,000 compared to these $48 a pound and $110 a pound. And it's, again, it's, it's expensive to build things, but everybody's kind of dealing with the same thing, like statewide. So, so if we look at alternatives and what are included in them, the, what I'm calling structural BMPs are these stormwater BMPs, like you typically see a wet pond. And this is basically a look at what's included in each of, each of these alternatives. You know, 40% requirement for redevelopment for an acre per year, so that redevelops. Increased street sweeping frequency is only, like you can see, is only in alternative two. Water quality trading with Town of Pleasant Springs, you can see, was in alternative, in three of the alternatives. And then water quality trading with treatment plant was in alternative four. So there's a lot of detail to this, all in our report. But the point is, we're looking at an array of things to try to help guide where you might go. Okay, so we take those numbers, and then we want to take a look at stormwater utility rates. And what the table is here is kind of the history of your rates and the increases you've had over the years. You started out at $53.24, $53.24 per ERU, or equivalent runoff unit per year. And it's, you can see it's changed there, and these are the percent changes. And again, that's, there's a bunch of details there. The city stormwater budget right now, which is funded by utilities, is the $598,000. And so when we look at a proposed stormwater budget, we're going to take that number, plus some of these stormwater program updates we talked about. And then we're going to insert alternatives one through, run through five to see what, what does that budget need to be? And how might the rates be increased to meet those numbers? And so these are some of the assumptions for, on the accounting side, I guess. 2.5% for 20 years. We would, we would assume that you would get grants from the DNR and Dane County that would fund most of the projects that are on $250,000 of their total cost, if successful, that your city existing budget wouldn't be inflated 3% per year for inflation, that some of your fees would increase as well, your number of ERUs, or which is your rate meter, basically, would increase 0.5% per year. And what else? Oh, that we would try to achieve compliance by 2038, or 20 years from now. The DNR, however, has not stated that, stated a set timeframe. They have mentioned 20 to 30 years for compliance. But rather, they want to see continual progress within each five-year permit term. And that's kind of what we're, you know, shooting for on an implementation plan. So this is just an alternative five example. This is the spreadsheet of, of how, these are the years up here, and then all the components that cost money. And not that you need to see that, but the effect of that is down here in this table, where alternative one through five, the budget range that you would need to fund is between, I guess, $468,000 to 1.7 million. And you can see how it changes for each alternative. So this becomes the, the graphic, I guess. And it's a little bit fuzzy here. But this is your existing budget right here, stormwater budget. And this is if you were to increase your stormwater utility rates by 3% per year. So you can see, so this is, I guess, across x-axis is years, and this is dollars. And so what these alternatives do is they hover through here. So your budget, stormwater budget has to go up here. And so utility rates to get there have to go up as well. And there's three alternatives we looked at. Five 23% rate increases every five years. And then, I can't read that, 6% and 6.5% rate increase per year for 10 years, and then a 1.8%. And then the last one was 5% increase per year for 13 years, and then a 25% increase, and then 1% per year. It's kind of trying to match the slope of these lines to meet the budget. And really, what it boils down to is there's some substantial increases that are going to be needed. And these are just three ways you might do that. And this is another way to look at it. Here are the alternatives again. So this is the annual dollars per year you range to, that you would have to increase to, to, to fund that alternative. This is your current dollars that you're charging, 6132. So you can see that it would start out, you know, somewhat near the 6132, but it would have to go over time, over a 20-year period up to those numbers, you know, right in here. And the revenue generated would be these numbers when you're currently generating that number there, the 561. So with that, there's recommendations that we have, and we'll just run through them here. Initiate the updates to the stormwater program discussed in Section 3. And we didn't, we went through some of those, but there's more details on that. Consider pursuing an alternative in Section 5 to achieve the Yhara Winds baseline of 40% TSS and 27% TP. Alternatives 2 and 5, like I said, appear to be most cost-effective. And then pursue DNR urban on-point source grants for any constructed BMPs. And we have done so already under the direction of the city and Rodney for the high efficiency, for a new high efficiency street sweeper, as well as for that industrial park bioswale to wet pond conversion. So we've had some positive feedback, I think, on, on one of the grants so far. And, and so, I mean, it's recommended that we, that you tap into these grant programs to help, to help out with the cost. So. And then, third bullet there is something that the DNR has, came out with in March 8, on March 8, 2018, basically after our project was done. They, they're, they want to give communities or cities credit for the leaf collection that you guys do. And, and so it's a whole analysis that you have to do to quantify the effect of your leaf collection program. And what ultimately the effect will be is that the TMDL pollutant reduction gap I talked about, the number of pounds you're short, will go down, or then our understanding is it will go down so that you won't have to do as much, as many of these BMPs, so that your costs should go down for compliance. And then your rates for, for your stormwater utility increase wouldn't have to be as high. So we have talked with Rodney about doing that potentially next year. And that will affect all these numbers, really, in terms of compliance cost. And so it's just a wrench they threw in, but it's, I think it's a good wrench to, to hopefully help you guys out. And then water quality trading with Town of Pleasant Springs and the city's treatment plan appear to be a possibility. And there's, there's some issues with that, too, in terms of using some of the treatment plant's capacity and, and just, there's paperwork issues and some other things. But there's certainly an opportunity to do that, should you, you want to pursue that. So the other, last, second to last one here is that you should continue to monitor Paradise Pond. The DNR is requiring that you monitor the discharge from Paradise Pond, because it's internally drained. And the only way it discharges is through the pump station that's down there. And so I think over the last year and a half, you have been sampling. And the numbers that come out of that, again, will also affect some of the, some of the performance, at least in that, in that particular basin. So. But we got that under control, working with Rodney on that. And then lastly, consider stormwater utility rate modifications if necessary. It appears necessary, but of course, you can take our information to help, help guide you on that. With that, I'd open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. Alder Person Boersma.
Thank you, Chair, I was just wondering if, I'm on Public Works, and we have a leaf collection, and it's fairly aggressive, I think, in the fall, where we start collecting leaves and, you know, people put them out.
Right.
Do you think that's aggressive enough for us, that we can, that we should be increasing that? And would we get, be getting credit or a good positive look see by the state by increasing our number of leaf collections or?
The, it seems like you, Rodney, you had felt that you, you comply with the conditions in general for what they're requiring. They're requiring, like, you have four pickups per fall, and then you follow with a street sweeper, and a couple of other caveats in order to get this credit. So it seems like you guys are real close to, to being able to get the credit. It's just calculating how much, how much you can get. And there's a few nuances there, like if, if that drainage basin already goes to a wet detention pond, they're not going to give you any more credit, because it's already being treated. So it's, but there's a fair amount of the city that isn't. So that's where you can get with a 17% total phosphorus reduction credit for, for those areas.
Because most of the city's phosphorus comes from leaves, right?
Right.
Very few animals in our district.
Yeah, it's, there's some science behind all of it, but that there's phosphorus from general usage, but yeah.
Thank you.
By and large, it's, it's leaves. Yes.
Alder Person Weesinger, go ahead.
If a municipality exceeds the reduction goals, then do, can we have, we can generate credits then for trading? Is that?
You can, but at this point, at this point, you'd be, at this point, you can, I think you would trade with yourself to help. Some of these reaches that aren't in compliance, you can trade with yourself. But if you were in the position where you had that much extra, you could trade to some, potentially trade to somebody else, but it'd have to be downstream.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions? Alder Person? Alder Person Curville.
How much does just general yard waste, like what's left over when somebody's mowing their lawn and blows all that stuff into the street? Does that contribute greatly to the phosphorus?
The, I would say there's probably a hard way to calculate that, but that's one of the best management practices, is keep your leaves and yard waste and everything out of the, out of the street on your terrace or, you know, mulcher. You have a mulching mower, things like that. So it's definitely something that you should be watching and I suspect you guys don't allow that, so.
I wonder, just thinking if there's a way to monitor that or some enforcement or something because it seems like occasionally, it looks like some people, most of what they're mowing ends up blown into the street instead of back into their lawn and re-mulched it.
We send out, and we put out door hangers. We do have enforcement. There's education, Tower Times. We know everybody reads it. But certainly there is an education purpose, you know, process that we have to go through to continue to educate people.
Alder Person Johnson and then Weisenger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question, and this is a lot of information to take in, and I, to the truth, I don't understand it all. But what I did key into is that the 3% or 5% increase of utilities every so many years to pay for it, is that what, that one with all the?
Oh, I can go back to that.
And I?
Yeah, so there was a, basically just for comparison purposes, I said, hey, let's increase your rates by 3% per year and see what it does. And it basically proves that it would be short. And 3% is kind of like this cost of living type of.
Yeah, 3% of utilities a year? I know what people would, would happen. People wouldn't like that.
Right.
Kind of, so I, you know, that's what my concern is, that I know we're trying to make better here, but, you know, we've got that. So that's what I'd have to look into.
Yeah, and that could, I could have used a 1 and 1/2%, whatever. It was more of a, a, what, what, what might be palatable to somebody and then we're way above that. You know what I mean? It would, the increase is going to have to be more than, than sort of your standard increase.
Okay.
It's not the electric water, wastewater utilities we're talking about, stormwater utility.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alder Person Weisenger.
I was just curious if we've explored incorporating BMPs into the proposed whitewater park plan at all?
We have not specifically. I don't know, we'd have to really look and see if there's opportunities there or not to do that.
Alder Person Riley.
Thank you. Could you just further explain a bit the water quality trading program? Give us, or give me a better definition of what that entails?
Okay, so I'm going to go back to a slide here that might help a little.
Perhaps further explain, forgive me, would have been a better way to stick that.
No problem. Yeah, I kind of breezed over it a bit. So Town of Pleasant Springs, we did some of their modeling as well. And so they were actually in compliance and had access, they had more pollutants that they had removed than they had, they were required to. So they're, theoretically, they might be willing to sell those to you.
Right, so it's like a carbon trading type?
Right.
Do I do?
And there's a, there's a trade ratio, like you have to buy twice as much.
Okay.
Just for uncertainties and things like that. So that, that's basically what that means.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for, for allowing us to work on this for you. And if you have any other questions that come up, let me know.
Thank you.
Will do.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next presentation is from Forward Development Group. They're going to talk about Kettle Park West Phase 2. Ron Henshew is here with David Jenkins. And just a little background, this is a discussion that we started last year as we were working on getting the access issue from 138. And it's kind of morphed into this presentation here. And in your packet, you're going to find some background information about the Phase 2 plan that was approved with some contingencies. And we just put that in the packet to give everybody kind of a reminder of where we were at and for some of the newer council members, kind of get them at least a little bit of background without overwhelming them as far as what was proposed for Phase 2. And then Ron's going to present kind of an updated concept plan.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Ron Henshew with Forward Development Group. I'm actually not necessarily replacing Dennis this evening. You may be more familiar with him than you are with myself. I'm our CFO and Vice President of Operations. And a lot of what I'm going to talk about this evening is really, it ties into the financial component of a development to try to help you think about some of the things that we're, we're thinking about, we're looking for feedback. So the line item on the agenda says, "Presentation of Kettle Park West Phase 2." And really what I'm trying to do tonight is to talk about some of the alternatives that we're thinking about and get your feedback. Because clearly, one of the things that we heard when we were last in front of the council was that many of you not excited about even thinking about TIF as it relates to Phase 2. And therefore, the question becomes, how can we either reduce it or eliminate it entirely? And really, that's what I want to focus on this evening, is to, is to not get feedback on our initial presentation, but to talk through some of the changes we're thinking about and see if that makes sense to you as a, as a community, as we then hopefully would come the next month and, and make a formal concept plan presentation, okay? I've prepared a presentation for this evening. I'm going to try to go through it quickly. You've got a full agenda this evening. But what, what you have in front of you, and I think it was in your materials, was it not?
Yep.
Okay. What you have in front of you there is, is the Phase 2 as it was approved in concept. And then there is a variety of resolutions that went along with it. But what I'd kind of like you to do is if, if, if you, if you have a hard copy, you can set it aside on your laptops there. I'm going to kind of go back and forth to it. But I'd like to do things, two things. Provide an overview of it as it was originally approved. Talk about some of the key items that created a need for TIF at that point in time and some things that we're looking to do to try to improve that, okay? If you go to the, the second phase of, second page of the presentation materials, what is here is capsulized view of the financial statements that we provided in, actually, August of 2016. So obviously, any resubmission would have to be provided. But as you see in the left-hand column, it talks about the summary of the financials of what would be available as it relates to that previous page and what was approved. There's the pro forma there. And you can see based on the revenue, the cost of construction, the purchase of the land, other costs, that to move forward with that development, the developer, in this case ourselves, would, would generate about a $5 million loss, okay? Now, you may not totally believe all the numbers, and some of the numbers may have changed. But if we change it $1 million or if we change it $1.5 million, there's still a significant loss. And that isn't something that I think any business person would move forward with. On the right-hand side is a summary of what we were requesting at the time. So to, in order to make it work, there was about $5.4 million of onsite TIF that was needed. And that obviously became a major stumbling block and, and an issue, okay? So that, that submission is kind of where we sit. And if we move forward, we would need to have that addressed. Now, what I'd like to talk about, and it's highlighted in the next page, and thank you for helping me, Rodney, I appreciate that. There's really some key reasons why that's happening. And like anything, the question becomes, based on what's happening, how can you change that to create a different situation? So if you, if you go back and you take a look at that first visual, you can just see a lot of green on there. And that green relates to parks and stormwaters and, and space. So, so if you take a look at that phase as it was presented, about 60% of the land is non-usable, non-developable. The normal relationship is generally, if you take a look, and I'll use one of the developments that's occurring here right now, Nordic Ridge. If you took a look at that and you calculated the square feet of saleable land versus the square feet of non-saleable, you'd find a normal relationship is 65% developable land, 35% that is dedicated to parks right away since later. So we have the reverse relationship here. And that's happening because of the size of the kettle, because of the size of the park that was needed based on the plan as presented. The other thing that was creating challenges with sales is the local market. If you, if you take a look at, at lots in, in Stoughton at the time, they are going for less on a square foot basis than what you'd find in other communities. If this parcel of land was purchased in Wanakeas, in example, or Verona, you'll find lot prices are, are lower here in Stoughton than they are in those communities. Well, then that doesn't increase as much revenue, but your construction costs, many of your land costs are the same. So, so that's an issue. Now, time is starting to heal that one for you. We've got some good experience now based on what's happening also at Nordic Ridge. And that, that actually is helping Kettle Park West. So that's a sales-related issue. The construction costs are another issue. The volume of collector streets, meaning the length of the collector streets, which is Oak Opening Drive. And if you also take a look at that first visual, what you try to do as a developer, Rodney, if you want to go back to it real quick, what you try to do in order to make a development successful, you want double-loaded streets. You want lots on both sides of the streets. If you take a look at the streets in this original phase as it was presented, a significant portion of them have no revenue associated with them, so you don't have any double-loading of streets. So as a result, then you have higher construction costs based on the revenue that you're getting, okay? So if you want to go back there, then thank you. So plus, we have a kettle, so our stormwater basins that are needed are larger, the kettle's not available. And then we have off-site costs relating to intersections that are very expensive and the stormwater requirements as well. So there's a whole bunch of reasons why it's not performing financially the way it needs to and wouldn't develop without some assistance, okay? So that's what was presented. What I, what I'd like to do now is talk about what some options for approving that might be. And this is ultimately, when I get through this, this is the feedback that we would like to get from you. We think we have some good ideas. How do you increase sales? Well, you increase sales, one of the ways to do is to change your asset type. So if you take a look in, in this particular initial phase, there is a significant amount of multifamily, more multifamily and less single-family. I, I have a slide later on where I'm going to give you more detailed information. But generally, as you go up the scale, your multifamily properties sell for the lowest price per square foot. Your residential sells for the highest price per square foot. So therefore, if we can shift from multifamily to more single-family product, you'll be able to generate more revenue within the same area, okay? Also, another component of that is that as you go with more single-family versus multifamily, your park dedication requirements go down. So when your park dedication requirements go down, you get more developable land. So that's another item that will help us. And then in terms of increased sales, time right now served to our benefit. I, I wouldn't want to take more time, but lot prices, the, the environment has heated up in the last couple of years, lot prices are going up, so sales revenue goes up. If you take a look at our submission of two years ago, we had $69,000 in there for a lot price, where it's in our current model, we have $85,000 to $90,000. And that's just a function of time. So that's, so sales, there's some things we want to talk about there that we can improve. Lower construction costs, find ways to not have to do as many cuts and fills and grading. We've got some ideas there. And, and take a look at the streets and infrastructure and see if we can minimize the construction cost. And then once we do that, the thing that we talked about overall was to make sure that as we change the design, that we think about your needs as a community and, and make sure that the flow through the particular area of the subdivision works, okay? So that's a lot of information. But what I want to do here on my next slide, you don't have this in your packet. So this is just an example. I don't want you to say this isn't going to be our, necessarily our submission. But it's close, we think, but it shows you what you can do and how you can change it. So if you take a look at this option B as an example, I want to highlight a couple of things for you. In, in the original option, we had 69 single-family lots. This, in this one, there's 179 single-family lots. In the first submission, there was 246 multifamily units. In this one, there's zero. Now, if you take a look where that happened is Oak Opening Drive, which is the long road that goes from north to south. To the east of that, where Rodney is kind of circling, was the multifamily before. We've, we've replaced that multifamily with what is frequently referred to as carriage homes. So they're, they're smaller lot sizes, but with a decent-sized home on them. And, and right now, in the, in the entire Madison market, that is one of the more popular products that is selling quickly, and I'll explain why. If you want to take a look at it, I'm not here to promote any builders tonight, but if, if you go to Veridians Autumn Lake Development, they have a model home out there that is a carriage home and an area that would look like this could look like, okay? So, so I'll talk about price points in a second, but.
Are you talking about more like a traditional neighborhood design then?
Correct.
Okay.
So if, if, yes, Sid.
Do you have any analysis about the need for those, for that many homes?
Yeah, what I can, let me talk in a second. I'll talk about price point and then that will tie in where the, where the need comes from, okay? Or what, you know, income ranges and, and price points. If, if you take a look, we've done, we've created four different types of housing here. You can kind of tell by the color. So there's some 40-foot wide lots, some 45-foot wide lots, some 65-foot wide lots and some 80-foot wide lots. So that's just a visual for you, that you can go back then and see there's less green space on here. We're still meeting our park requirements. We've moved the park to kind of the southwestern edge, and there's a purpose for that. As we would proceed into further phases, that park could then be expanded to the west. But we've also added a significant amount of what some refer to as a horizontal park. So I'll talk about a little bit of that in, in a few minutes as well, okay? So this next page then talks about pricing. So I've added some notes to this that, that aren't on your slide. And the first one is, is single-family residential in, in your market sells for somewhere between $7 and $10 a square foot. Your multifamily is going to be $5 to $7 a square foot. So by shifting from a multifamily to a single-family, we've increased the sales. That, of course, helps the project. And then if you take a look, what I wanted to highlight and Sid to get at your question, these, these smaller lots of 40 to 45 feet in width, those would have a home that's in a price point of 275 to 325, okay? 60% of the lots in Dane County sell for less than $350,000. The problem we have in the market right now is that most of the new homes that are being built are at price points that can't be afforded by many of the individuals who live and work in our community. So, so what we're doing here is, is trying to get at a variety of price points that will allow for all individuals to be able to find a home and that they can afford within the Kettle Park West development. Those medium lots that are 65-foot in width, the home on there would, would likely average somewhere between 325 to 400. And then the larger lots would be 375 to 450. So what we've done is we've designed in really four different price points.
I don't know that you can answer this, but Rodney, what's the standard size for a city lot?
City lot in the older section of the city is 66 feet wide by 132 feet deep. So Page Street, Prairie, Prairie Street, most of those are in the 66-foot wide range.
I have a question for Rodney.
Sure.
The Linrood Plan was supposedly a kind of a traditional neighborhood plan, correct?
It had certain elements, yes.
Because that might be kind of a, a good plan for them to kind of look at, to see that we actually did approve that over 10 years ago.
Certainly.
All right, okay. The Linrood Plan?
Yeah, it's on the, it's an appendix to our plan.
Okay, all right, thank you. So that's, so that's. So that's kind of the revenue side to it. What I want to highlight, if you go to your next slide, is just a few other things that are advantages that come from this change. It's not all about the revenue, we're trying to improve the revenue, but to do it in a way that meets the needs of the community. But another thing that is a benefit of that is that the traffic counts, and we did a traffic impact analysis, which determined what the traffic would be under the previous plan. Your traffic counts and volumes are going to be significantly lower under this plan. If you take a look at your overall housing units with the multifamily was 350-some units in the previous one, and now they're 179, so just by numbers and households, you can see that there'd be less traffic. So that's a good thing as well. They'll place less demand on the intersections and other things. The parkland requirement would be less just based on the number of units. But the other thing I wanted to highlight is, one, as it relates to school-age children. There's a difference between multifamily and single-family as it relates to the number of children that would be in that type of housing. So I provided a couple of slides. I just added, if you want to go to the next one, Rodney, and it's kind of hard to pick up, but this was a slide that I added that you don't have in your packet. This actually, I came across today, which is why it wasn't in your packet. We sent that out last week, but it's hard to read, and I can provide this. But what the interesting thing is, if you take a look there, what I've highlighted there is McFarland, Oregon, and Stoughton, and it's a summary of what's happened within the school districts over the last 10 years. And I'm not really telling you anything that you don't already know, but as you can see, McFarland School population has increased 52%. Oregon's increased 10%, and yours has decreased 10%. So that's an issue that I know you're trying to deal with as a community. I think the good, why I put that in there wasn't to necessarily illustrate that point. It was to illustrate that the great potential that you have in the city here. You're the largest, much larger city than either of those two that are adjacent to you. You have more to offer than what they have to offer as a city, and so therefore, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to do something about and correct that trend. And I think that this is an opportunity to help with that. So that's just some information that demonstrates the growth that could occur here. If you take a look at the next slides, those are from the National Association of Home Builders, and it just states basically, based on the type of household, the number of children that you could expect. So on multifamily, you'd expect basically 27, I think it is, what is that here, average number of children per hundred of population. So basically, 27 children per hundred, whereas you see on the single-family, it ranges from 38 to 41. So therefore, basically, if we shift from a multifamily-type housing product to a single-family-type housing product, there's likely going to be more children in those neighborhoods. So once again, that's a benefit, and the next slide just summarizes that in a different way based on new and existing construction, but it also shows the difference between the types of households that generate children. What we did on the next slide, and once again, you don't have that, I just calculated this today, it doesn't show as dramatic of an effect that I had anticipated it would, but in our original plan, if you use those national statistics, you'd expect there'd be 89 children in that phase two of Kettle Park West. In the second plan here, you'd see that there's 104. It's not a big difference. To be honest with you, we have a number of multifamily properties, and we don't see it at 27 per hundred. I mean, we've got 88 units right now in Windsor that's just about full, and we have a handful of children. So it may vary based on urban areas and other things. I think the variation would be greater here than what it's showing, okay? All right, a couple of other things, and I'll try to wrap up for you guys of things to consider. Rodney, if you could go back to that option B, I want to highlight a couple of other things that are on this slide, if you guys want to stay on this slide in your views. What, there you go. A couple of other subtle things that you can't see. Oak Opening Drive, and Rodney's not necessarily a fan of this, I'll acknowledge that, but Oak Opening Drive, in the original plan, is a collector street. Right now, of course, there's nothing to the south or actually nothing to the north, but it's designed to be a collector street someday. What we did is we narrowed that street from what would be a collector street to a residential street, which basically takes about eight feet off from the width of the street. Anytime you take width off from the street, you lower your construction costs. What we did, so that you could, in thought here, expand in the future if you choose to, we put a multi-trail that goes up the westernly edge of Oak Opening Drive. So it's less expensive to do a multi-trail than to do a full street depth and width, but we also think there's a lot of information out there which we can provide and we'll be prepared to address, but there's a lot of information out there that says it's better to get bikes and pedestrians off from streets. Actually, you can put bike lanes on the street, make them wider, but it's safer, more easy for the traffic to move by having it off-street. But that easement would be provided with the multi-trail. That street could be expanded in the future, but in the short term, that would save some costs. We had a variety of other multi-trail collectors here that would also make the area better connected than what the first plan was that we had presented. Couple of other things in the overall design, you think the multi-trail system's expanded, there's a better transition, we think, from commercial to residential here, and by putting the park where it was, it provides for future expansion of that park. So with that, basically, the next slide summarizes some of the changes that were made and the results of them, which I've highlighted most of those, so I won't highlight those. Let me cover a couple of other things that are relevant, I think, and then open it up to get your feedback, which is really what we're looking for, so it relates to something like that example B. Go one more slide for me, Rodney. So there's some financial benefits that are occurring. With those changes, so if you take a look at that second page we had given you, with these changes or changes like these, the revenue now in the pro forma has increased by about $3 million plus. That's a big deal. That helps a lot because then that correspondingly would lower any potential need for TIF. There's a slight increase in construction costs, that's because there's more roads. When you add single-family, you add more roads, and so there are more linear feet of roads added. So the net effect is slightly less than $3 million, but it's still significant. An important thing is, is the increment, the assessed value of the original Phase Two was estimated to be at $50 million. In the example B we're providing, the projected assessed value is $60 million. So that's a big deal. That's a big increase in assessed value, and there'd be a significant reduced need for TIF in Phase Two as it relates to the onsite. So the combination of all of those is what we tried to accomplish. So I just have a couple more slides that I added, and then I'll let you answer questions. I, for 25 years in my career, I'm a CPA by background, and I specialized in financial institutions. So evaluating credit and borrowing and investments is something that near and dear to my heart, I guess you could say. So I get excited about it. You guys might not, but some thoughts on TIF that I think sometimes get lost. This is a question, is TIF about borrowing or is it about an investment? Or is it both? I'll answer the question.
I was wondering if you were looking for an answer from us.
Rodney, where to think about. A lot of times we're spent on the borrowing component because obviously, as a municipality, if there's a TIF need, it doesn't matter if it comes at Kettle Park West or if it comes anywhere else in the city, funds are going to have to be borrowed by somebody because you don't have the ability to generate cash reserves that allows you to fund something with cash. So it's about both, but the question then becomes, how do you evaluate a good TIF project? And I would build a case that you have to evaluate based on your return on investment. You don't base it on whether or not you have to borrow, because you have to borrow. So I have an example I want to show you in a second, but the other thing that's important in any tax increment district is the managing, the timing of the borrowing and the completing of the project plans. And I think there's a way, I'm talking about the onsite tonight mainly, but there's also offsite that needs to be dealt with. There's a way for USA Council to manage through that, and I think do it to the benefit of the city, that I'd be more than happy to talk about at length at some other time. But Rodney, if you can go to the next slide, here's the return on investment thing I want to highlight for you. Let's use an example, and I'm not saying this is what our request is going to be, I just used it for example purposes. This is a slide, if you look at the upper left-hand column with the bold in, it says, what if there was $3 million that needed to be borrowed to complete Phase Two, okay? The original amount was $5.4 million. What if it's three? What if it's two? How do you evaluate more than just the borrowing side? Well, with $60 million in assessed valuation, this takes you out basically 15 years, and on the right-hand side, it says, based on that valuation and based on that borrowing, here's what our cash flow and our cash balances would be. So ultimately, when all is said and done, based on example B that we presented tonight, and if, if $3 million was needed, that'd be a return on investment of 19.6% to the city, meaning you get your money back and you get a 20% return on an annual basis for 15 years. Is that a good investment? I mean, you guys will have to decide. You know, that's how, though, a borrowing for TIF ultimately needs to be evaluated. If you borrowed $3 million, and I tell you that you're going to get an annual return of 1% on that, then, yeah, I wouldn't do that. It's no different than if I'm investing in an IRA or retirement plans. Everybody says these days you should plan on getting 7.5%. Well, if I'm getting 3%, then I'm not very happy, but if I'm getting 10%, I am. You know, here, based on this example, if you got 20%, would that be good for the city? That's how it should ultimately be evaluated. I don't care if it's ours or somebody else's. I could do these calculations all day long for you on any example, but that's how it works now. Now, the other one that I want you to think about in terms of when we do come back and talk about things, based on the commercial center performance, I want to talk about that separately from Phase Two. Based on the commercial center performance, you'll see that commercial center is right in line with the projections that were provided initially. And because of that, that TIF shortly is going to start to generate cash. We don't obviously know and understand when you do your borrowings and what you borrow for and what the terms are and all of that, but based on a general understanding of that, that portion of the tax increment district's going to start to generate cash. You could, some of these things that are required in order to move forward with Kettle Park West can be delayed and only ultimately installed once the cash is available. I mean, there's an opportunity to time it so that there is no borrowing that's necessary. So that's just another food for thought for you, so that's ultimately, when we, you know, will come back someday, and we're hoping that that be sooner rather than later, some things just food for thought. So basically with that, changing from multifamily to single-family and providing a variety of different options for members within your community, does that make sense? Does that, what's your thoughts on that? Is that a direction we should consider?
Other person to answer.
Yeah, I have lived in what would be called traditional neighborhoods, which means that you have smaller lots. I actually support that wholeheartedly. What I didn't care about the plan was I don't really support these vertical parks, so we would have to work on kind of the, you know, kind of the parkland dedication. I think that we need to look at our comp plan because this, you know, as you said, Oak Opening Drive is not a neighborhood street. It will have to be larger because of what's in our plan. I will support off-street bike and walking lanes, that's what people want. I obviously will not support TIF funding for residential. Nobody subsidized my home when I purchased it, the many homes I have, and I have a real problem with subsidizing residential, so that's my feedback.
Thank you. Thank you. Other person, Boersma.
Just an observation from before too, because I was on council when we had the concerns about this, number two, and that I think the primary concerns were financial considerations of not wanting to borrow a lot of money in a TIF. The second one was access to 138, and then I think the third was whether or not we could resolve the issue of parks, as Denise just talked about too. And just one question about 138. Are you satisfied with the potential that this, that the access to 138 in the way that we're considering would accommodate single-family homes like this?
Yes, and it should accommodate it better. There would be less, there would be less demand on it than there was. Now, we would, of course, update our TIA to have a third party, you know, verify that, but there should be less demand.
And with the access to 138, which is a positive, I think, would there be a significant increase in cost for the developer? I mean, are you anticipating that with access now that we potentially have, that the cost would increase a lot?
No, no, it shouldn't. That access that ultimately was approved or agreed to was similar to what had been anticipated. So no, there shouldn't be any additional cost there.
Anybody else have any feedback? Other person, Weesinger.
You talked about minimizing construction costs, and one thing I would be interested in hearing more about is how you propose to minimize the construction cost without jeopardizing the quality of the construction. I saw one thing with product specifications. So I know you talked about the width of the streets, but if there's anything else that would jeopardize the quality, I would be interested in hearing about that.
To answer that question, no, not that we're anticipating anyway. The product specifications, and that's really more of a longer-term issue for the city to think about, and I'll comment on examples, but it's not something that we would recommend or even say, you know, required for us to move forward. But there's, you know, the installation of a ducted lion pipe versus some type of an HDPE pipe has significant cost differences in it, and there's things of that nature that was intended to be, there's ways to lower construction costs, it's just dependent on what the community is really willing to accept at this point in time. We don't have, that was really more of a bullet point, we don't have anything we're recommending right now.
Anybody else have any feedback? Is that raised or?
I don't know if I even should.
Then you probably shouldn't.
That's up to you.
Okay, I'm here. It's ironic that you brought Nordic Ridge in as an example as far as a developer, because they didn't come to the table and ask for any TIF dollars. I do not support developers and using TIF dollars. There was a referendum that came out, and they said no to the TIF, and even if they didn't use the TIF, they said no. So I have to follow what my constituents wanted and will be voting hell no. Thank you.
Other person, O'Connor.
Kathleen raises a valid point, and can you give an argument why if...
Kathleen raises a valid point and can you give an argument why if we haven't supported Tiff for other developments, residential development, that we would do so here?
The, I can highlight the reasons why it's needed. It has to do, the reason why a project, whether it be residential, commercial, multifamily, it doesn't matter the asset class, it's a function of the cost of the development based on where it's located. So the challenge with Kettle Park West, and it's been known all along, and I understand that people disagree in regards to when Tiff can or should be needed, whether it's residential or commercial. The problem that you have with the Kettle Park West, which is adjacent to two major highways, which increase the cost of any access to the development, it's also a kettle, so a kettle means that water doesn't escape the area, so all the stormwater that's generated in the area has to make its way someplace else. In this particular case, a force main has to go down Jackson Street and all the way to the Ahara River watershed eventually. So there's costs that are involved that relate to the location. It doesn't have to do with the asset class, meaning residential versus commercial versus multifamily. So those are the things that create a need in a particular situation.
Okay. Other person Reeves and then Durant.
So I would support single-family definitely more so than multifamily if it's quality and I would have questions just about the construction. But, you know, I, there are inherent costs in what's called greenfield development and so when you chose that lot, I'm quite sure you have intelligent engineers and who looked at that and said, there are going to be some challenges in engineering and infrastructure needs in terms of sewer and that sort of thing. So, you know, that wouldn't be a surprise and I'm sure when all of us buy property, our houses, we get out our calculator and we see what needs to be done before we buy it and we make an informed decision about whether or not it's going to be financially a good idea. So, you know, and again, I do refer back to what the, my previous, well, recent feedback still has been in terms of my district and they're not comfortable with Tiff. So, but I would support multifamily more so than, or single-family more than multifamily, but Tiff I would say, I would not be in favor of at this juncture.
Okay. Other person Durant and then Johnson.
Could I comment on that real quick?
Oh, sure.
When we came to the community and did that analysis that you're talking about, it indicated that the area could not develop without the need for municipal assistance. So there's a pre-annexation agreement that was signed and approved by the council at the time that indicated about 14 million in financing assistance would be needed in order for this area to develop. So four and a half million of that was needed in the commercial center and as we're moving through, then there's additional need and that was known and agreed to and we moved forward with the development. Now, the council's changed, there's a different view, we're trying to minimize that, but that was researched and it was known at the time and it, you know, now we're trying to work and find a way to minimize that, but it's not anything new.
Other person Durant.
Yes, I served on the council for eight years and got off in 2008. And before I got off, we had somebody come to us with a proposal for this piece of property. They did not ask us for Tiff. So, you know, my point, I think that other person Reeves made very well. You knew going in that this was going to be a challenge. When we had the other developer who came to us over 10 years ago, they knew it was going to be a challenge and as you state, you know, councils come and go and, you know, the question is, we had somebody come in and they were going to, they were looking at developing it and they weren't asking us for money, so.
Other person Johnson.
Just to let you know, my district voted, and I can show the numbers, voted no to Tiff and no to even if there wasn't Tiff for the development, okay? So I really hope people will honor what their constituents wanted. We have a new sheriff in town and let's follow what our constituents wanted in the first place. Thank you.
I'm just going to make a few comments and then we'll go around again. So, I mean, I don't, we can't really change what happened with Phase One. You know, I was on the other side of that vote myself and you might have noticed tonight I brought my lemonade with me. So at this point, I think that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to take the situation that was dealt with to us and make the most out of it. And I think the proposal that has been presented tonight is a step in the right direction. Does it go far enough? I don't know, we can have more conversation about that. The alternative really at this point is to do nothing and to do nothing, I don't believe, serves in the best interest of our community. The referendum that was referenced was based on Phase One, it was based mostly on the commercial part. Our school district has been suffering, declining enrollment for many years. We have an opportunity to try to help address that issue and that opportunity is before us and I think we should really take a long, take a long, hard look before we just totally dismiss it. Because the return on our investment is not only for the money, but it's for the, it's for the, for our school district. And if we're going to continue to thrive as a community, we need to get more kids in our school district. And the combination that's been presented with the Nordic Ridge development and potentially this development and the riverfront puts us in a position to do that. There is a major shortage in housing in Dane County. We have an opportunity to get our share. That's something that hasn't happened for many years and I think we should take a serious look at doing that. So that's my two cents worth and we have Alderman Bartlett.
Just throwing my piece in, I guess I do support also the switch to single-family homes, I like that change. And I like the multi-use trails and I happen to like the horizontal and vertical parks. I often use those in some other communities that have them locally around here. I think they're pretty nice to have. I'd have to think more on the width of Oak Opening Drive, at least maybe at some kind of traffic controls. I'm worried about people cutting through there to get around some of the other roundabouts that are going in on 51. I don't want to have too much traffic going through there, especially with that density of housing and hopefully kids it'll bring. I do support it, I definitely, we do definitely need students and need families and housing in the area. That's pretty clear to everyone, I think. I am open to some Tiff, not anywhere near the number that was asked for last time. We also have a big issue paying for the city services and with this many houses up there, how are we going to pay to serve those while we're paying off, while the Tiff is recovering, bringing back money would be a big thing. So I'd have to see what the numbers are. With the right return investment and the right timeline, I would be open to some, but just to put that out there.
Thank you. Other person Johnson.
Hi, thank you, Your Honor. I've got a proposal, why don't we do a referendum and ask what the city wants again and let's follow what our constituents want instead of us thinking what they want.
That's certainly something we could do. I mean, there's a process to go through that and if you'd like, we can outline that process and bring it back.
I've already asked Holly to start working on that.
Okay, that's what we'll do. And then in the meantime, is there any other feedback you'd like to give the developers while they're here tonight?
I've got a question. Did you, the two properties, because of the access on 138, you were going to have to get those two properties either bought or you were going to ask us to do eminent domain? Have you gotten any further on those properties?
We have not and we're not, at the moment, we're not pursuing it until we know where we're at as it relates to.
Have you contacted them at all?
Not in the recent past, no. Originally we did.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments or feedback that they want to provide? Okay, hearing none, thank you. We'll continue the conversation and I guess we'll be talking about what our referendum options would be at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Minutes and reports are in the packet. That takes us to public comment and we have one person signed up for a public comment and that would be Ryan Schultz. Ryan, you can come up to the microphone and you have three minutes. If you're getting close to your time, Holly will give you a signal.
Okay.
If you could just state your name and address.
I'm Ryan, I live at 326 North Pine Street in Janesville. I'm trying to get a bartending license for Atlons tailgaters. I'm okay with you guys just making it to just lawns tailgaters. I'm not, you know, I know I have a bad history in Janesville and I'm trying to better my life and get out of Janesville and that's why I'm here today, to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak at the public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda and I'm looking for a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Durant, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen, anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, aye abstain.
None opposed, one abstention. And that, there is no old business tonight, so that's going to take us to new business and that's Resolution 126 of 2018 and this comes from Public Safety. Other person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. R. 126, 2018 authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license and special events license for the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce for Coffee Day Festival and I would so move.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, a second by Riley. Any discussion? Other person, or Jensen?
Yeah, the Public Safety Committee met on June 27th and voted unanimously to approve. Obviously, it's a festival, it's been going on for what, five, six years now?
Twenty-one.
And.
Where have you been?
It's fun. It's a fun festival, I love the car show and everything, so I'd encourage everybody to vote for it.
Okay. Other person Borisova.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have concerns about this and I always have had concerns about this special events license. This is not the first year, I understand. I simply don't know the reasons for needing alcohol to be served at a coffee break event or a job-a-jog event. This involves a number of children and that's kind of been my standard for voting against some of these. This is one of the most significant events in Stoughton. Now, we have a number of bars in town that serve alcohol. I'm not sure that we need another event like this. I'm not sure how much money it produces, but the culture of our city again is changed to get licenses for a lot of people who want to have special events and I continue to be concerned about that, especially for our children. I frankly have not been attending a lot of events although I was integral to this event in the past. It's, I guess it's my way of sort of voting and I'm by my feet and I think some other families are, do the same thing, I think they stay away from some of these events because alcohol is served. I'm always concerned about whether best practices are being used and I just, by potentially staying away from this, I'm being culturally denied, I think, on my own part, but I'm just feeling like it's, I just don't, I just don't understand even the reason, even though it's been going on for years and years, I just don't know the reason why we're having alcohol at various events, especially this one and Sednae. I just don't, I'd like, I'd like to know why we're doing it. Is it financial or is it cultural or is it because of the car show or it's a celebration of our history of Coffee Break and I just, I just don't understand the reason for it.
Other person Durant.
Yeah, I mean, what caught my attention was that the hours from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. And I, when I read through this, I'm like, huh? Why do we have alcohol at this? You know, I have some sympathy exactly for what, you know, Sid is talking about and especially the hours that we're talking, you know? This doesn't seem to be an appropriate time to be selling alcohol during that time.
Any questions or comments? Other person Johnson.
Your Honor, I know there's a rule about one-way conversation, but it would be nice to have Ms. Trotter speak about alcohol or do you, we can't do that, can we?
This is on the agenda, right? So this, if they have questions, they can ask.
Sure. Would you like to come up, Laura, and address the question?
Thank you. So it sounds like the question is why do we have alcohol at this event? It, quite honestly, I inherited it that way and we have been enjoying that as a part of the festival. It's honestly a very small portion of the festival. We don't open it until 11 o'clock in the morning. It does, it just is there as kind of a nice way to encourage people to stay for lunch and enjoy the pig roast. So that's, I think at one time too, we tried to transition it into more of an afternoon event and so I think that's where beer entered the equation, but I do know that some people look forward to that as part of like that lunch and wrap-down of the day.
Okay.
Other person Riley.
Thank you. Is the beer a significant source of revenue for the festival?
It is not.
Okay. Other person Borisova and then Johnson.
That was my question and, you know, whether or not it's a, it's a, something that generates a lot of money or a little bit of money and whether, you know, I guess I, I think probably some of the attenders like it. I think some families see the, see the beer, you know, the beer and say, what is this all about? And I've had a number of people come up to me and say, I support your concerns about these because our culture of Stoughton seems to have changed and whether we, that was my question, is how much money we generate every year for and whether we really need it as a city. You know how much money you generate every year?
I haven't looked at the numbers, but it's in the low hundreds if any.
Other person Johnson and then O'Connor.
Thank you. After thought and listening to Sid and the times that it's open, I'm going to change my vote from what I had on the public safety and I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Other person O'Connor.
Do you consider it a worthwhile part of the event?
I do know that we would get feedback that people were disappointed that it was gone, especially people who have been there all day from setup to takedown. They kind of enjoy having a beer at the end of the day as they finished up their work. I think that they would be disappointed, so.
I just have a quick question for the chief, have you had any issues down there?
None whatsoever, no.
Okay, thank you. Other person Bartlett.
Yeah, I was going to say I'm one that's going to support it. I'm one that likes to go down there and have a beer for lunch too and I know plenty of people I hang around with that do like that as well. I really like the new layout, I hope that layout works this year.
But that's what we're doing again.
Is that the first year you've tried that?
We tried it last year because of the, the way the grounds were tore up after the fair and we, turned out that we loved it that way, so that's our new pet plan.
All right, thank you.
Other person Riley.
Thank you. Do you, do you have an impression that it increases the attendance to some extent or to some reasonable or important extent anyway?
I, we've never measured that at all. I do know that after about noon, people are kind of shying away from coffee and it's nice to have a reason for them to stick around to see the cars and the crafters and everything like that. After about noon-ish, people, the coffee kind of takes a backseat.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, we'll take a vote on this. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
No.
I believe the ayes have it, we can certainly do a roll call if you'd like.
I would like a roll call.
Would you? Okay.
Riley?
Aye.
Boersma?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Ferbello?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Lee Singer?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Duransek?
No.
Bartlett?
Aye.
There are three noes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Resolution 127 of 2018 also comes from Public Safety, Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. That's R. 127, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue an operator's license to Ryan Schultz, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, a second by O'Connor, Alder Person Johnson.
Yes, Public Safety Committee met on June 27th and approved the recommendation 3-1.
Any questions? Alder Person Boersma.
I don't know who voted against it. I would be interested if people wanted to talk about that.
I believe that was me. That was you.
You have a reason, Your Honor?
I, you know, just based on the history and the chief's recommendation, I just felt that I wasn't that interested in having that person serve. But I was definitely in the minority, so majority rules, so whatever you guys want to do. Alder Person Reeves.
So I guess I was, I like, I looked at the letter from Chief Locke, and I, I mean, I'm very much in favor of people turning around their lives and choosing a career path so they can make a living, but I do have to look at four prior convictions for OWI, a felony conviction with a reduced charge of homicide by an intoxication, intoxicated use of a vehicle. And I have to think, I'm just not sure, even if everything is super right now, and he's in great recovery, I just am not sure that that's a really good career path, you know, to be a bartender. So I guess part of me says, it just doesn't seem like a good idea to say, yes, this is a good career path. So I, I'd have to say I'm not gonna vote in favor.
And we have a clarification from the chief.
Yeah, just for a clarification, my original memo indicated that the fourth offense was a felony and also was a reduced charge from a homicide by intoxicated use. That was a reporting error made by the arresting agency, so that fourth offense was actually a misdemeanor. It missed the cutoff of the new law going into effect, where the fourth offense is now a felony, but at that time, it was about 30 days prior to that law becoming into effect. And the homicide by intoxicated use was an error entry made on the criminal history, which has since been corrected.
So there was no homicide?
There was no homicide, and the last one was not a felony. But there are still four convictions for OWI, plus other criminal history.
Alder Person O'Connor.
If Mr. Schultz is still here, I'd like to know if this is his full-time occupation, or if it's an accessory to something else, or...
He's still here.
I do roofing right now for, in Janesville and all over the place. I've done a lot of roofs in Stoughton. I'm just getting too old to do rovers. Kicking my ass now. I mean, that's a tough job. My buddy Lonnie, we've been friends for 15-plus years now, and I helped him gut the place out. It's the old Sunny's. We got it out, we redid it. I'm there all the time helping him with everything. So, you know, like I said in the safety board meeting, we can't find nobody that wants to work. And if you do, it's barely, they barely can get a license, or they can't do nothing. I'm there now, but I gotta have someone there with me when I am working, just to close. And the problem to get someone there, and Holly knows it, 'cause we send them up to her, and it's hard to find someone that wants to, wants to work.
And the other question I had was, it seemed like there was some alcohol-related stuff that was referred to earlier, but then in 2017, there's several other charges, misissive ordinance violations, or perhaps misdemeanors, I'm not sure. Are those accurate, or are they like noise, or...
Yeah, it's a noise ordinance at my house. I live on 326 North Pine Street. I have an ingrown pool. I have a neighbor that lived next to me, and I had a hot tub on my property by my fence, and if for any reason, me and you could be sitting there talking in the hot tub, and he calls the cops. It was the same person calling. The guy's moved. I haven't had one problem since he's moved. And the, and the city of Janesville, when they, they came there several times and didn't want to write the tickets. Because, but finally, I mean, we, I went to the city of Janesville Police Department several times. They, they said they don't write a ticket 'cause they don't see a problem. And then finally, they, I mean, we got a book of them saying that the officer came there and didn't hear no noise, so he left. So then finally, after so many calls, they're like, well, we're just gonna start writing tickets just 'cause that's what they had to do. So then, now the guy has moved, and I haven't had one problem at the house.
Alder Person Boersma, and then Riley.
Yeah, thanks for coming in to talk to us tonight. And I was just wondering whether or not you feel like your, any treatment for AODA issues relating to OWI offenses has been positive? Or is it, is it, has it, has it helped you?
Yes. I, after my fourth DUI, I went to AA classes. I don't drink nearly as often as I ever have in the past. And me working at the bar, watching people, is a big difference. And it's like, wow, I acted like that. Or seeing some other people there, it's, it makes you look at things a lot differently.
Alder Person Riley.
Thank you. You had to complete some AODA treatment as a result, obviously, of that fourth conviction, prior convictions, correct?
I did.
And you obviously, you completed that when...
I completed it through Mercy Health Systems.
What did you have to do for the AODA?
I had to attend classes three times a week, from four to six, or four, six to eight, or it was, I don't know the exact time. It was for two hours, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
And it was group sessions of some sort? Was there an absolute sobriety condition, I presume, of your...
I did for the first, uh, up, once I got the fourth DUI, there was absolutely no drinking.
Right.
And then, once I got sentenced to 90 days in jail for it, obviously, I couldn't drink 'cause I was in jail.
Right. And when you had the absolute sobriety, was there ever any testing done with your AODA?
They tested me, yeah. Every time you go in there, piss test.
And no positives on, on any of those?
No, there wasn't.
Okay. The forfeitures from 2017, were those all no, noise-related?
All noise.
Okay.
Every one of them was noise.
Okay, thanks.
Attorney Dragni.
Just a few things for the council to be aware of. One, in order to consider a conviction as a basis for denial, the council has to determine that there's a substantial relationship between the conviction and the licensed activity. The noise-related violations would be difficult to put into that category. Second, this is just an opportunity to let the council know that, beginning August 1, I believe, the law will be changing in a way that will complicate your consideration of a conviction record. It will still be the case that it will be necessary to find a substantial relationship between the conviction and the licensed activity, but there will be an additional requirement that the council give the applicant an opportunity to demonstrate that they, or at least address the question of whether they have been rehabilitated. And so that's not effective yet, but it will be effective beginning on August 1, which is just around the corner.
Alder Person Riley.
Thank you. At the present time, do you have an interlock device on the vehicle that you use?
I don't drive. I have my son driving me up here, or I ride with Lonnie all the time.
Do you have a license at present?
I don't have driver's license.
Okay. But you're, are you paid up on the various fines?
Everything's, nothing. As of October, I can get my license back. I could go, probably go get my occupational right now.
Sure. And if you were to get your occupation, would you be required to have an interlock device?
I do for 20, I think it's 27 months, once I do get the driver's license.
Very good, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
No.
No.
Three noes? Is that what you heard? I think there was three noes, so that motion carries. Next item is Resolution 128 of 2018, also from Public Safety. You guys must have been busy.
Yep, yes, we were. Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 128, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue an operator's license to Danielle O'Shea, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, second by O'Connor, Alder Person Johnson.
Yes, the Public Safety Committee met on June 27th and voted 4-0 to deny the license. And I would encourage everybody to vote no on this.
Any questions or comments on this one? All in favor, say aye. And those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, that motion fails. Resolution 129 of 2018 from Public Works, or Public Safety, Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. R. 129, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the liquor license renewal for Dewani Lodging LLC, doing business as Brick House, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, second by Alder Person Johnson. Alder Person Johnson.
Yes, Public Safety Committee met. We had a, a public hearing on this, and we approved 4-0. There were contingencies on it. I believe he has to, what was it, I can't remember, 30 days, 60 days?
Actually, the contingent, and I'm just looking at the resolution, which I actually didn't have a chance to read before this minute. So the condition, the contingency was that the applicant entered into an agreement with the city, committing to have the premises reopened by not later than September 1, I believe. And such an agreement has been prepared and signed by the applicant. And so the resolution, in the, in the, the operative language of the resolution, would just request that the council consider modifying it to authorize indirect to issue the license on the condition that the applicant entered into this agreement, which is already signed.
Okay, so do we need to amend the motion, or what is...
Yeah, it would be a motion to approve the resolution with the change referencing the requirement that the applicant enter into the agreement.
Okay. Is that okay, Greg?
Yeah, it is fine.
Okay, and Pat? Our past, actually, seconded that one. Okay, so as you might recall, there was a fire at the Brick House, and that's the reason why he's been closed. And we have something in our ordinance that states that if an establishment has been closed for 60 days, they could have their license not renewed. So what we did is we issued a letter, which initiated a public hearing. The applicant came to the public hearing and testified and said they would like to reopen, so we agreed to allow them to do that with the contingency that they have the repairs done. Basically, they have to get an electrician in there and do the repairs, so the place is safe to reopen. And we agreed on, on that date, would give them time to make those arrangements. Like, get everything?
Yes.
Okay. Alder Person Boersma.
Just one question of Holly. Is this well within our ability and numbers for density for alcohol licenses within the city?
So this is a reserve license. I believe we have four reserve license left. We don't have any regular Class B licenses within the city, but we do, would have the reserve licenses. If you didn't approve this, and the applicant wanted to reapply, they would have to wait one year, and then they would have to pay the $10,000 reserve combination Class B fee, again, the next time they applied.
So we're, we're at max on the other part of it?
We are at our, we are at the limit for regular Class Bs, but we do have four reserve Class Bs with the $10,000 fee attached to it.
The only difference between a regular Class B and a reserve Class B is one costs $10,000.
And the other costs $600.
All right, Matt, I'm just, I'm pointing out how many licenses we have, and we're at max. So I'm, I'm wanting to clarify that.
We're not at max.
We're not at max.
We're at, we're at max for regular licenses?
No, it does.
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I said.
Yep.
Our density is pretty high.
But it's still well within what we're allowed, so you can look at it either way. Anybody else have any comments or questions on this one? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstention. Okay, we're gonna jump down to number 13, which is R. 134, 2018. And that one's, came through the Finance Committee.
Yeah, the Finance Committee met on June 26th and recommends the council approve R. 134, 2018, authorizing the proper city officials to contract outside building inspection services for approximately eight weeks, and I so move.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Go ahead.
So we have a medical leave coming up in the Planning Department, and this is to cover this particular person. And I think that the motion should actually state that $10,000 is going to come out of contingency. So I guess basically, I have, do I have to amend the motion?
Financial impact, it says on there, it's financial impact of $10,000.
Oh, 'cause it's not on, let's see, it's not on the page I just read.
No, it's, it's...
It's on the resolution.
But it's in the motion itself?
It's in the resolution, yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. And so $10,000 will come out of contingency, which then brings our contingency down to about $12,000. And I don't know if Rodney, you need to say anything else?
It's not a full replacement for the inspector, he'll be gone. It'll be a supplemental service to provide for certain inspections that we can't do in-house while he's, he's out.
Any other questions or comments? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Item number 14 is a discussion regarding lifting the council-imposed moratorium on the Kittleson Building located at 315 East Main Street. This is coming from Alder Person Boersma.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have been speaking with, I've been looking at the documents related to the moratorium on the Kittleson Building, which is at 1315 East Main. Also, had talked to our city attorney, who presented a couple of correspondences from Stafford and Roosevelt. Matt addressed the issue a couple times, September 7th, as well as August 4th, 2017. I was struck with the fact that the people who have bought this property, which is the Kittleson family, have been waiting for a very long time for some kind of decision related to this. And if, if anybody wants to look at page 5 of that first document, no, the applicants will not be able to proceed further while the moratorium is pending. And then the second document, it's more expensive, extensive, actually. Kittleson's applied for a project review approval. The planning commission is responsible, et cetera, et cetera. But again, the document states that the intended use, which is a park, is not allowable, but that the, the fact that we have a moratorium means that the Kittlesons have no way to move forward in any way. So my, I'm, I'm proposing a motion to lift the moratorium on the demolition of the building of 305 to 315 Main Street, also known as the Kittleson Building.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion by Boersma, and then a second by Alder Person Duransek. Anything else? Alder Person Boersma?
No, I just, I just think that the moratorium is creating an impediment, not just to the Kittlesons, but also to the, the city itself. I've had a number of comments from people, constituents and otherwise, about the condition of the building, and that it's really kind of an eyesore, something... of the building, and that it's really kind of an eyesore, something needs to be done. I know that the Kittlesons may have to jump through some hoops on this one through the Planning Department, but I think in order for this to move forward in any way, whatever, I think we need, on this particular building and not other ones, this is, the moratorium should be listed on 315 Main Street.
Okay. I have Alder Person Mieski, and then O'Connor.
Thank you, Your Honor. President Mieski. That's quite all right. Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, what Alder Boersma is talking about are two different issues. First issue is the moratorium, and the reason the moratorium was put in place in the first place. If you read in your packet, there was a rather lengthy legal description and reasonings that were put forth, which showed conflict. That is why there's a moratorium. There are conflicting ordinances. They have not been cleared up as of yet. Part of them have been by one commission. There's another commission that needs to continue and finish its homework and get the language cleaned up, so that we have, we do not need to have a attorney tell us if we can move forward on an ordinance. That should be clear. Right now, they are not. That is the issue of why the moratorium is in place. The second issue, which Alder Boersma is talking about, is totally different. It is regarding a demolition of a building, which has nothing to do with the fact that the ordinances are not clear and concise, and do not meld together with each other. So, and as far as his statement regarding the condition of the building, it's a shame that the building is in the condition that it is in, and I lay that on the ownership of the current and past owners. That building went into request for demolition because of the fact that Planning Department, I believe, cited them for not maintaining the building, therefore they asked for a demolition permit. He sold the building. That demolition permit was basically null and void because of so, and the building was still not, was not cleaned up as it should have been by the citations. But we allowed it to sit for how many, for as long as it has already, with no, with no attempt whatsoever to secure that building, to make sure that building was safe, and we allowed it to go to disrepair. There was no guarantee that, that the owner of the building right now was going to get a demolition permit, but he allowed the building to, they allowed the building to go into further disrepair. That is a shame. Until that building was deemed to be demolished, it should have been kept in a decent condition, and it has not been. But that's another story altogether. Like I said, the moratorium is in place because of the fact that we do not have our ordinances are not correct. Before we move forward, those need to be taken care of. It's a shame that he thinks that, or they think that the building should be torn down without the moratorium being in effect. I, on the other hand, say that until we get our ducks in order, it does not, nothing moves forward. We clean up our house first, then we can move forward. That was what the council had, had came up, came up with, and had voted on, and was, was put forth. So, why we're considering it for a single building, because, why? I don't know. We shouldn't even be talking about this. Until the ordinances are cleaned up, nothing should happen.
Alder Person O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A question for Matt. Is, is this properly noticed that we could take an action tonight?
It's a discussion only.
Well, the motion was to take an action.
No action.
It doesn't say, it makes no reference to action, so, although, it just says discussion. I think though, the question for you, I'll let, I'll let you be the judge of this. The question is whether you believe this gives adequate notice to the public that there might be action. If you think this would not give such notice, and that the public would reasonably conclude that you would only be discussing this and not taking any action, then, then that's how you should interpret the ordinance. I think it's kind of a close call from a notice standpoint.
I just had a question on where, where that, the whole ordinance discussion, and which committee is it with? If it's possible just to get a bit of an update on that? Is there light at the end of the tunnel, I'm wondering?
Well, we have several people that are involved with this. City Attorney is, Alder Person Bartlett is on the Planning Commission, and you can speak to it.
And we are still working on Chapter 78. We did have a lengthy conversation about it last night, and hopefully resolve some issues. So, the Planning Department is going back and revising some of the language, and then we're gonna take another look at it. It is moving forward, made some good progress, but there's still some outstanding questions. So, I don't know exactly what timeframe, hopefully relatively soon, but it'll be a little while still.
Just to give a sense of what the process might look like going forward, so, staff anticipates going back to the Planning Commission at their next meeting, so that'd be about a month, to review revised language. If the Planning Commission is satisfied at that point, then it needs to be scheduled for a public hearing. We'd have published Class 2 notice, have a public hearing, so that'd be another month later. Following the public hearing, Planning Commission can make a decision, make a recommendation, send it to council. So now we're talking, so we're talking August, they see the language, September, public hearing, and maybe a recommendation. October, it comes to council. That's best-case scenario right now. Unless, there's a decision to hold special meetings and move more quickly. And as, you know, this has been a difficult process.
So, how long has it been, this, this moratorium, then?
The moratorium was adopted, as I recall, in, say, February of 2017?
February of 2017?
That's my recollection. February or March?
So, we're talking a year and a half?
It's been going on a long time.
Alder Person Drancy?
I agree that we should have ordinances that do not conflict, but this body looks ridiculous after a while, when we have a building that is in not only this condition recently, but has been in this condition, I'm sorry, for years. And I also have heard from people in the community, and I have to tell you, they think you're bozos for just letting this go like this. And this is a year and a half now, and we're talking, maybe October we'll have a decision? I'm sorry, but this is not really appropriate at all. I, I seconded this, and I think we, if it, I don't think it's properly noticed, but it should then go on the next agenda as properly noticed, and we should take action on this. Ridiculous.
Alder Person Jensen, and then?
Thank you, Your Honor.
I just want to make sure everyone understands that if the moratorium is lifted, that's not, that doesn't mean the building is automatically then, or that the owner is entitled to a permit. What that means is that you're back to the Planning Commission for further processing of the request for approval to demolish the building under the existing ordinance, which presents its own concerns.
Alder Person Jensen.
The attorney just pointed out one of the things I was gonna say, but it would, yeah, it definitely has to come back through to planning. The other thing I wanted to say is that this weekend, we had a lot of activity out there, and I was out amongst the populace at the music festival and at the fair, and there were two things that people mentioned to me. One was fireworks, the lack of, and the other one was this house. They were wondering why in the world we were stopping it from being, taken care of one way or the other. So, I have to say that I am in full support of removing the demolition moratorium for this building.
Alder Person Riley, and then Wiesinger.
Thank you. I reviewed, and by the way, I thought it was excellent, Counselor, your, your letter or memo under date of August 4, 2017. Having reviewed that, it seemed to me that you had resolved what I'm assuming are the disputes we're talking about in the ordinances. It does not. So that does, so then I'm unclear, being new here, what the issue is with respect to conflicting ordinances, because as I read your memo, that resolves, that resolves some issues.
So, actually, what, what's happening in the, with respect to the ordinance is that it's being completely revised to establish a new standard relating to demolition, and new standards that would govern other projects in the downtown design overlay zoning district. So, there was a legal opinion that I rendered some time ago to help address some of the challenges in interpreting the existing ordinance.
And authority, et cetera, right?
Yeah, there was, there were a bunch of questions that had to be addressed on the existing ordinance, but the council decided, like in February or March of 2017, to refer to the Landmarks Commission originally, the question of revising the ordinances, to address a range of concerns, I guess. And that process led to rewrite of Chapter 38, which has been approved, and that relates to the Landmarks Commission and its process of designating local landmarks and so on. That's done. The Downtown Design Overlay Zoning District has proven to be a, something that's taken more time and is still in the works.
And is that in the purview of the Planning Commission, or?
Well, ultimately, it's in the zoning code, so the Planning Commission is working on recommend, its recommended draft to bring to council. It would be amending the zoning code.
Thank you.
Alder Person Wiesinger?
My interpretation of this when I read it was that it was publicly noticed appropriately, and that we could take action on it, and I know that there are several people in the community who also interpreted it that way, because they were excited that the council was gonna possibly lift the moratorium on it, and action would be taken on it. So, I would be comfortable proceeding with action tonight if anybody else would, and if the attorney thought that was reasonable and appropriate. I would also say that the fact that ordinances are in conflict of each other is not the fault of individual constituents living in this community, it's the fault of maybe council or the city, but it's definitely not the appropriate that individual constituents in our community be punished for something that the city has, has caused or created. So, I would be in favor of removing the moratorium on this building.
Alder Person Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know there's a lot of issues going on with this building. What I have a problem with is that this building was allowed to get this far in the first It does not look good on the city, whether there is an ordinance issue or not. We should take pride in our downtown, and I just am disheartened that the building, I mean, why can't there be, it just, to me, seems like it's kind of a game we're playing to let this building go down and get worse, and it just, whether it's gonna be approved later or not, why can't we just at least have some rules or something in the ordinances that somebody has to upkeep at least a minimum? I mean, because I feel like it's a slap in our face that until things are finished and completed by our committees and ordinances are finished, I mean, how much does a pane of glass cost? You know, I just, I mean, I wouldn't do that to my house. You guys wouldn't let me have that at my house, and we're having this downtown Main Street, and I know it may go this way, but in the meantime, you know, I don't know, I just, I think it's very disrespectful to our downtown.
Okay. I've got a few comments, and we'll go around again. I was on Landmarks when this first came to Landmarks, and I can tell you that between Chapter 38 and Chapter 78, we had three or four really late meetings. Attorney Dregney was at them. I mean, they started at 6:00, they went 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, and they went till 9:30 and 10:30 some nights to try to get the language straightened out. Ultimately, Chapter 38 was approved by the council. Chapter 78, we sent it to the Planning Commission, and they wanted to put their seal of approval on it, which is fine, but then, you know, we had a turnover because of the election, reorganization. We've had a really difficult time trying to schedule special meetings, and even the meetings we've had at planning on this topic have gone long. So, the people that have made a really sincere effort to try to get this thing right, and what happened is, is years ago, when our ordinances were drafted, you know, we hired a consultant, they drafted the ordinances, and I don't think they had any idea that we would someday adopt this downtown overlay district, and they didn't really have any accommodations in their boilerplate material that were in their ordinances to cover this type of situation. And that's kind of why we find the mess that we're in right now. One of the other recommendations that came out of the, of the Landmarks Commission was to establish the minimum maintenance standards, and I believe that's going to Public Works, if I remember right. So, the issue that you raised, Tass, is a legitimate one, and unfortunately, that committee hasn't been able to meet in the last month. We have a meeting this week. But that's one of the items that they're gonna be looking at, because that is a real issue, because we really, even if we wanted to really enforce it, we really didn't have the tools in order to do that in an effective way. We can send out letters, but at the end of the day, you know, they may or may not conform it. We can only push it so far based on the language, language that we currently have. So, there's been a lot of hours put in and a lot of cost from the city attorney to try to get this issue resolved. It's been taken very seriously by many people, and a lot of them, you know, volunteer to be on these commissions. They're not all council members, so there's, there has been a lot of good ideas and good work put in, as Alder Person Bartlett said. We're making some progress, we're just not there yet, and Phil's been at the meetings as well, and, and whenever you turn over a group, there's this learning curve, just to kind of get up to speed on the issues, just like there is on everything else. So, we're working toward, you know, trying to get something that will serve us better going forward. The issue before you now, you know, I, I think it's noticed in a way where you could take action, but I'm not the attorney here. So, I guess it's up to the, whatever the council wants to do. Anybody else? I think I saw a couple hands over here. Caravelo, and then Bartlett, and then Jensen?
I had a question about the, I wasn't aware, or I guess the extent of citations that were issued against this property in the past, and I'm wondering about the history of, of that, if anybody's really.
I don't have the current packet to go through the history at this point, to be correct, to share with you.
Alder Person Bartlett?
Yes, first, I guess, I'd like to ask a clarification from Attorney Dregney, just what happens to this property if that is, moratorium is lifted? As, do they just need to, does the condition for the demolition permit, would that just, all they need to do is bring back the landscaping plan? Or would they restart the process because they put in application for a use that's not allowed, or zoning?
Yeah, so I think they'd need to amend their application. The memos I did a year ago, I think, describe what the concerns were that we identified with the application. They'd have to, so they'd have to amend their application to be, you know, in a way that would conform to the requirements of our code. I think the use was an issue. I'm gonna have to go back and refresh my memory to make sure I really don't miss any, and as you, as you may remember, this was a challenge last time. I think it'll still be a challenge to figure out exactly how they would need to amend their application, number one, and then the Planning Commission would have, I think, the difficult task, trying to figure out how to apply the standards in the code to the application, and that, there are two reasons that's difficult. One is, I think the biggest is that those standards were never really designed with demolition in mind. We learned that early on in the process. So, they weren't particularly well-designed to address that issue. That's the real challenge.
So, yeah, my biggest issues with this, first, I was against it from the start, just because they had applied for a use of that property that wasn't allowed in our zoning codes, and if the council wanted to change that use, that's up to the council, but at that point, I don't think the commission, I think the overstep to authority made a mistake in allowing it to be used. They asked to make it a private park, which is, there's no definition for, and is not allowed in our zoning codes. in our zoning codes. And I don't wanna see a vacant property sitting on downtown forever. If the landowner would come up with a, a new plan to make a use of that to benefit the city downtown and add to the character downtown, I would be definitely open to hear it and given serious consideration. Right now, I'm not sure which way I'm gonna vote on this, but I would like to see something move forward with it. But I still don't like the, the land use that was applied for it. I know that's another issue, so.
Okay, I had the other person, Jensen Mieske. I see Riley after that. We'll go from there.
I'll pass.
You'll pass? Okay, other person, Mieske?
A point of clarif-
Mieske.
Point of clarification to Attorney Dregney. I believe you had stated in prior assessments that the, the permitting process that was applied for by the current owner was null and void because of the fact that the, he was, it was being piggybacked off of the previous owner.
No, that's, that's not correct, actually. The, one of the memos included in the packet indicates that the current owner submitted a, a new application and that the, was, and that that was the application that was operative. And so he wasn't proceeding under the prior owner's application.
He was proceeding under the project review.
He was proceeding, he was seeking project review approval under our current ordinance as the current owner. He submitted an application. He paid the fee. He was working his way through the process. And then we ran into some real challenges with both interpreting the ordinances, applying the ordinances. And there were questions raised about whether the application was one that could be approved. And, and I think there's been some discussion of it tonight, that the, the application indicated that the proposed use of the property was as a park that the public would be allowed to use, privately owned park. And that was, we came to the conclusion that that wasn't an allowable use.
All right.
I don't remember if there were other concerns with the application. There may have been, I just don't remember offhand.
Okay. Other person, Riley?
Thank you. I have a concern with respect to voting on this tonight, honestly. When I look at the agenda and I see it says discussion, I would defer, of course, to council because he knows far more about this than I do, obviously. But I would have a real problem myself voting to, taking a vote on this issue of moratorium, given the fact that the agenda merely says discussion. That concerns me with respect to our obligations, you know, to, to notice the public with respect to an action like this. So that's just my two cents worth on that. Now, with respect to what happens ultimately here, if I am reading your August 4, 2017 memo correctly, Counselor, it seems to me, we're not gonna have much say in that, correct? When all is said and done, the Planning Commission is going to make the determination as to what, what, one, whether I think they can take it down, if I'm not mistaken, right? And then, two, other than our moratorium consideration. And then, two, what can ultimately be done with it between the Plan Commission and the zoning administrator? We don't have a part in that, at least as I read your memo. Am I correct?
Under the current ordinance.
Right.
If the moratorium is lifted and the application proceeds under the current ordinance, the Plan Commission makes the final decision. That's correct.
Right.
Under the new ordinance that's in the works, that could change.
Very good. Thank you.
Other person, Jensen?
Yeah. I believe that under our rules, the chair can make the decision if we could go ahead with approval of this tonight or not. That would be your decision.
Well, I think the chair could make a ruling as to whether the agenda is adequate subject to.
Yep, that's what I meant.
A challenge by the council. The council has the ultimate authority on that. From a legal standpoint, as I said, I think it's a close call. The court, the legal, the standard that applies is whether the public would have reasonable notice of the, of the fact that action would be taken or might be taken.
I believe that there is reasonable notice and you guys can challenge that if you want.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't hear the chair.
I said, I believe there's reasonable notice and you guys are welcome to challenge that if you'd like.
Well, I, yeah, I would say that I, I would disagree respectfully. But I would disagree. I just have real concerns about an agenda that says discussion of a matter versus saying that, you know, we're gonna take some action on a matter. And if Counselor thinks it's a close call, that's disconcerting to me as well, that he's not confident in, in whether or not we should be taking action, given the agenda notice.
And by rule, are you asking for a vote?
Sure.
You're, you're official challenging it, okay.
So this would be a, this would, basically what we had is a point of order raised. We had a ruling from the chair. And now that ruling can be appealed to the council for a vote. And the question is whether the notice, whether the agenda allows a, a vote on lifting the moratorium or, or not.
That takes a two-thirds, is it not?
No, I think it's a simple majority.
I think it's a simple majority.
Can we call it a question then?
You can continue to debate it if you wish.
I'd make that motion.
You made a motion to?
To vote on whether or not we agree with your assessment.
Okay, so there's a motion.
And I'll second that.
A motion by O'Connor and a second by Duransec. So the motion is to, let me just make sure we have this clear.
Yeah, why don't we make sure everyone understands? Why don't we say a, a yes vote is to affirm the chair's ruling? And a no vote would be to disagree with the chair's ruling. So a no vote would mean you could not vote on lifting the moratorium tonight. A yes vote would mean you could.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We'll take a roll call.
Please.
No means we can't. Riley?
No.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Reeves?
No.
Mieske?
No.
Caravelo?
No.
Jensen?
I.
Lee Singer?
Aye.
O'Connor?
No.
Duransec?
No.
Bartlett?
No.
And that motion fails on a vote of three to eight.
So the chair's ruling is not sustained.
Okay, so we go back to discussion? Is there any more discussion on this?
No.
Other person, O'Connor?
I agree with the motion. I just don't think that we can vote on it tonight.
That's fine.
I'd like to see it scheduled for the next meeting.
All right, we'll bring it back in two weeks. Is there any additional information you're gonna need?
Where will be, where will we be on this ordinance issue in two weeks?
Same place.
Same place, okay. And again, where we are now, we lift this moratorium, it's in the Planning Commission's hands, and they are operating under the current statutes. We would have no part in making any final determinations. Okay, thank you.
Other person, Boersma?
Okay, I presented a motion. It was seconded, so this, this'll apply to the next, I'm gonna hold it over to the next.
Meeting.
Council?
Yep.
So I'm not, I don't have to present another motion. I presented an adequate motion tonight, I thought. And I want, I want that to stand for the next.
No, because it's a special item. Well, yeah, so the way I, from a, from a procedural standpoint, the next agenda, the agenda at the next meeting will include an item that says discussion and possible action regarding lifting the moratorium. And your motion can then be bat, brought back before the council at that time and voted on at that time. Council's decision tonight was that the agenda doesn't authorize a vote.
Basically, I think.
So, so is my motion to be held over to the next meeting? That's the question.
You mean as if it were tabled?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Start it over.
I'd start over.
I don't want the same problem that we have tonight.
Oh, we'll post it differently.
With the discussion, but I just presented a motion.
Well.
I, I don't want the same issue, which is discussion about, about this issue. I want.
We're gonna post it differently, so it'll say discussion action item. And that'll resolve that.
If you, if you wanna make absolutely certain of that, you can make a motion to direct that the agenda at the next meeting include discussion and possible action or discussion and action regarding lifting the moratorium at such and such an address.
Can I, can I, can I ask that my motion be considered at that time, which has been seconded already?
There is no motion because it's null and void because there's, it's only a discussion item. You can't motion on a discussion item.
I'm not sure about that.
There's no motion on a discussion item.
I mean, I think, I think that was the effect of the council.
That's what the ruling was.
The effect of the council's ruling tonight, that it, it really was premature to make a motion. It was really only on for discussion. I don't think it matters procedurally, that you're gonna be able to present the motion at the next meeting.
It doesn't say, you'll just, it'll be there as a, as a discussion and action item and you can make the motion at that point.
Okay, just so we don't have to go through the same old rigmarole that's, next time around, it's not discussion, it's gonna be a motion.
It would block the action item next time around.
It has to be, it has to be an action item, okay?
Okay. All right. Anything else on that? Otherwise, it'll be back in two weeks, is the action item. That's gonna take us to Resolution 130 of 2018. And we have a group of them coming from, well, they went through personnel and then they went through finance. So I don't know if you wanna split them or if finance wants to take them all or what do you wanna do?
I'll take, I'll take finance and finance met this evening and recommend that you approve our 130, 2018, resolution, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve restructure of the finance department, combining the city and utilities, finance departments into one centralized department, implementing the improve, the approved attached organizational chart and ISO move.
Second.
And so AJ has a very nice presentation that actually includes nine, 10, 11, and 12. And so basically, all the information should be there for you. And I will just hand it over to her.
Okay.
And I think she has some printed mater-
We do have printed materials. It looks like now we've got the full screen up, but we've been having some technical difficulties. So we'll go ahead and get started. What I'm gonna refer back to is the menu or the memo that I had sent out on June 5th to all of you to review the restructure and recommendation that was approved unanimously by the Personnel Department at the beginning of July or last Monday. So we'll be going over the restructure and they, as Denise had said, they tie into the resolutions that will, that'll be in front of you. So the first thing is the reorganization of the Accounting Department. This has been something like we talked about, has been long in the, the coming and the processes that we've been looking at. And it's the right time now. So what we're looking at doing is taking the city accounting department and the utilities accounting department and making that one department. So we don't have the redundant functions. With that occurring, we are looking at then setting up a new position as a Director of Finance slash Comptroller. That position would have a Assistant Director of Finance slash City Treasurer reporting directly to them, as well as the finance, the two finance people in the City Hall office right now, as well as the accountant two slash payroll person that is down at utilities. So it'll be three reports there, going into the Assistant Director, all reporting up to Mayor Swadley. We then have, under the utilities, reporting to Robert Cardaz, it'll continue as is, Director, Assistant Director Hoops. He will continue to be over billing and metering, which is completely separate. And we'll talk a little bit about that and why in the next slides. Any questions on that so far? Okay. So we talked about what positions will make up the finance department. It was that Assistant Director reporting to the new position of Finance Comptroller, the City Deputy Treasurer, the City Finance Accounting Specialist, and then the Utilities Payroll and Accountant Two. So those positions, like we said, will report up. The change will create one finance department for the entire city, which we feel will better utilize the talents of the staff. And as I talked about in the memo to you, for example, we have our clerk doing accounts payable. We have our deputy clerk currently handling payroll for the city. And that just happened over time and through attrition, that we had individuals in those positions at the time that it made sense. They had the skill set, so we moved it over there just to have separation of duties. Under this new plan, we will have some expertise in the area, reducing redundancies, creating efficiencies. And then the big thing being providing that succession planning or coverage when people are either leaving the city or for retirement and/or leaving the, the city for a different position. Right now, we put ourselves in a position of having to pay $200 an hour to a consultant. So hopefully, this structure will allow us to have the redundancy and the cross-training that we wouldn't have to have a consultant or at least as many hours out of a consultant. Any questions on that? Okay. So the question comes up, why not include utilities in billing and metering? And they will continue to report to Assistant Director Hoops, and the reason being it's more technical versus financial. And the staff is trained to go out in the field, so we have some people going out and handling the disconnects, also looking at the meters. And then Director Hoops has developed the system and the processes. He grew up in that utilities billing and metering position, so he's the resident expert. So it makes sense to have those individuals continuing to report in through that. So we felt that it was just a better fit. The Director of Finance Comptroller, as I talked about before, is a newly created position. It graded out at a level of 21. And what we are asking is that we promote Jamin Friedel, who is our existing finance manager. And he is currently at a grade level 17. And we'll explain the difference when we get to that point. The Assistant Director slash City Treasurer, we were kinda looking at that as the Director at the City of Finance, taking those higher level position responsibilities, giving those to the Comptroller. And then this position was downgraded from a 19 to a 17. So we are doing a anticipated hire date. And again, this is an approximate of 819 at a rate of $40 per hour, which we felt was market, confirmed through our consultant, as well as Springstead, and looking at neighboring communities and what the comparables were. So the next question comes up, how will we handle those costs? 2018 and 19 cities, the city and utilities, we agreed to split that 50/50. And then during 2018 and 19, the department staff will track their times so that we're able to determine what the true split should be in 2020. Any questions on that one? The estimated cost for the remainder of 2018 for the city with the split of the newly created position, including salaries and benefits, would be $33,0682 to the city. And the newly created Assistant Finance Director, City Treasurer, would be $19,00574 based on that 819 hire date I gave to them. So the total cost for the city in 2018 would be $53,25632. Taking into consideration Director LaBord's vacated position, her salary and benefits, not double dipping there, because if you remember, you approved the funds to be taken from contingency during the 18 weeks that we have Paul here. So I'm just looking at September through December savings of $33,28296. And again, that's salary and benefits. So the total cost to the city for the Director and the Assistant Finance Director would be $53,256. But then taking into account that savings gives you a grand total of $19,97336. Any questions on those numbers? Okay. Next question is, what do we need to budget then for 2019 to make this happen? And what we are looking at here is the Director's wage and a total estimated at $147,37320. We're looking at an Assistant Director wage of $4107, so that comes out to $115,705 for a total cost of $263,307. And if you take 50% of that, the city would be responsible for $131,539. 2019, the city would be responsible, as we talked about, for 50%. So that's the total of the 131. If we stayed with the current structure that we have right now today, where we would just be hiring the Finance Director, that cost after right sizing the wage to market would be, with benefits, $124,77480. So the difference between the new structure with the Director and the Assistant Director versus the current structure is $6,764. So pretty negligible there. Questions on that one or the numbers? Okay, next steps. We have Resolution 130, 2018, which is to approve the finance department's restructure, combining the city and utilities finance staff into one centralized department, like we talked about. Then we have Resolution 131 and 132, which is the approval of those position descriptions for both the Director, Comptroller, and the Assistant Director. And then the last resolution, which is to approve the final, the final approval of the promotion of Jamin Friedel to the position of Finance Director. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that approximately two years ago, when we did our redocumentation and updates to the hiring process, at that time, we set in place our promotion process as well as our posting policy. We are not required to post externally, and we are allowed between the mayor and myself to make the recommendation for a promotion. We've taken this a step beyond that. And we are, we already took it to- We've taken this a step beyond that and we are, we already took it to personnel. They have approved it, as well as we're bringing it to you tonight for promotional approval in closed session. Any questions on that?
Go ahead.
Yes, the finance committee approved all of these resolutions this evening and the money is, is there. Obviously, for next year, that will have to go into the budget, but, you know, it seems like that's going to be pretty much a wash. The additional funding, while we may or may not have it in contingency, we do have more than enough money in our undesignated fund balance of about $3.2 million. So we have the monies there, but also, we may choose to take it from there or just do a budget amendment. And based on my review of what's happened in the last five years, we cover our deficits, plus we have been having surpluses. So there should be more than enough money in our present budget to cover what we have.
Any questions on that, by the way?
Lisa, do you want to read the Resolution 130?
130, well, Denise already read 130, right?
Yeah, I read, I read Resolution 130 and I moved it.
Okay.
So there is a motion on the table and is there any questions or comments to the motion of 130, 2018? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. And then the next one is Resolution 131 of 2018.
Lisa, you can take that one.
Nope. Resolution 131-2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the newly created Finance Director, Comptroller Position Description and Grade Level, and I so move.
Second.
Sorry.
I think you heard a second over here.
I get that second.
Riley gets a second, all right, we'll get you in the box score. All right, any discussion on that one? Did you have any follow-up on that, Lisa?
No, I mean, I think AJ's given us a lot of information and details, so.
Okay.
Nothing to add.
Anybody have any questions or comments on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Resolution 132 of 2018.
I'll take that one.
Okay.
Okay, the finance committee met this evening and recommends that you approve our 132, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the Assistant Finance Director slash City Treasurer Position Description with a grade level of 17 and a pay rate of $40 per hour, and I so move.
Second. Second by Jensen on that one. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Resolution 133 of 2018. Lisa, you want to do that one?
Resolution 133-2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the promotion of, oh, golly.
Jamin Friedel.
Thank you. To the newly approved position of Director of Finance, Comptroller, at grade level 21 and with the recommended pay rate, personnel approved 4-0. You finance it as well?
Motion to move into closed.
And I make a motion to move into closed?
Second.
Do we really need to?
I'll look to the city attorney for that one.
It's up to you to decide whether you need to or not. There's a motion and a second, now you can discuss it.
Okay. Go ahead, AJ.
We'll be talking specifically about the employee's performance, as well as the pay rates for this position. So I would highly recommend that we move into closed session, that that is private information between us and the, the employee.
I would move that we go into clo, into a closed session, as per state statute, 19.85, perens I, perens C, for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Boersma, any discussion on going into closed session? And I think we have to do that by roll call.
Bartlet?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
She's gone, yeah.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mayeski?
Aye.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Weesinger?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Duransec?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we'll go into closed session. Pass left at about 20 after. We have a motion. Did we have the motion before we went into closed, didn't we?
I, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, and we just have to include the pay rate into the motion, right?
Oh, I see.
Should I read the resolution again, or do we, or just whoever made the motion actually just say that? I don't know how, I don't know the process.
I think you made the motion.
Yeah, you made the motion, but we made it without the, the amount in there.
So I reread it with the.
What do you think there?
I, I'm not even sure, I, I kind of lost track of where we were with the motion.
So we have a motion to approve the promotion, but when we made the motion, we didn't have the wage in there.
It just says the recommended pay rate.
It says the greater rate.
Okay. Because as I understand it, you need to make a decision about the pay tonight. So you, you, I would, you can either do it as two decisions or do it as one, either way.
Can I just reread it and then add the pay rate?
Sure, you could do that.
That's fine.
All right. Resolution 133-2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the promotion of Jamin Friedel?
Jamin?
Sorry, Jamin Friedel, to the newly approved position of Director of Finance, Comptroller, at grade level 21 and with the recommended pay rate of $54.79 per hour, and I so move.
I second the second time, which will be the third second, I'm sorry.
I think Denise beat you to it.
That's right, Denise gets the second.
Too busy thinking.
She's sneaky like that. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Congratulations, Jamin, that carries.
Second.
That is cool.
A motion to adjourn, I think O'Connor had it and then Jensen had the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, thank you.